Permit for Wild Kenner, Northern Veterinary Service, for a fifty by one hundred attached addition on the west side of existing building on a two point eight zero tract in the northwest quarter of section seventeen township one thirty-two range seventy-six.
Just adding on to the vet clinic, all setbacks are good, your roads all the right way?
I didn't see an issue with it.
Can we entertain a motion to approve table or deny the permit for Dr. Northern Veterinary Service?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for Mr. Kenner.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Materi to approve the permits, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, permit approved. Next is the annual liquor license for Art Place By The Bay LLC. The Sheriff Sanders looked at that at all, or?
That's the annual, no one.
Just curious, that was always kind of a, well, I think that's a left doors event going on. No, I think he always just, because the other issue would be if there's any compliance issues and whatever. I just know we've had that issue before, so just.
Who's Northern Plains A, isn't that Maverick?
Maverick. Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna name change or not.
Yeah.
Fine, that's why I gave her a call. That just happened, huh?
Were you texting Gary?
I am.
Because the sign was Maverick.
Well, I just texted the sheriff there to see this stuff.
I looked up.
There's no sign there anymore.
Isn't it the month?
No.
So then they changed.
Well, we'll move on to the next one here, we'll just kind of skip them.
They changed the name of that.
It's building permit for Brady Weber to erect a seventy by thirty-two residence with a fifty by thirty-six attached garage on the northeast quarter, section twenty-four township one thirty-three range seventy-eight.
Where we just talked about the approach, setbacks good from the road, I don't see any issues.
Okay. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Holm, is there any more discussion on building permit for Brady Weber? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, permit approved. Next is a voucher for mowing the right-of-way in City Braddock. So this bill was given to us by Mark Bruin, it's billed to Emmons County for mowing the right-of-way in city limits. And I guess I'm not sure why we're getting the bill.
Well, that's my question.
He turned it into gar and leaving it to.
Is it, is it, because the assumption is, is that they think the county owns that, because the county shop is nearby, but there's one parcel in between the county shop and there's, so they assume that we have all that, and that's the, you know, the property owner's responsibility to mow that ditch? It is on pavement, though, and is that federal aid?
Yeah, but that's a gravel road going east.
It is, and.
Right, but it's paved for that little stretch, and that's what you mowed according to this drawing here, it was like that stretch of pavement.
But the city ordinance is requesting them to mow it, we're not requesting it, so why should we have to pay for it?
Well, I guess the only question I have is if that's still part of the federal aid, because that's the Braddock Road basically coming out Highway eighty-three, so.
We don't pay anything for that, do we?
No, well, we've mowed the federal aid road ditches, and that's why I'm saying, is like, is that the, like, he's mowing it and saying that we're supposed to do it, but then I don't, did anybody request that he mows it? So that's the question, I would.
Well, we would only do it a couple of times.
I have a bad discussion lady you're talking about right here.
It's basically from.
From the curve east.
Yeah, it's basically from the intersection where the highway comes into town, that major four-way in the Braddock East to the curve, or not even quite to the curve too.
We noticed it the other day, you were going about when we were going over to Mark.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's, yeah, what's ready or.
So what he is mowing, it looks like to me, is just past would be John Hammer's old case leadership, so that last building on, right along the road on the north side, Josh.
He's mowing there in two.
On the north side.
Left of there, yeah, like, right somewhere in that area to the intersection, like, we mowed according to this map.
On the north, on the south side of the road.
Yep.
Going east.
That's what they're mowing there, and.
Boy, he mowed it quite a few times.
Well, he moved it.
I don't agree with the bill.
I guess I'm just kind of curious, what he would say, and who requested him to do it, or.
John Hammer, the way John was telling, because John Hammer used to mow it, and then he moved to Bismarck, and no one was mowing it, so.
Former county commissioner John Hammer is what you're saying?
Pardon?
Said former county commissioner John Hammer is what you're saying?
Well, I think he just did it because he had his shop close by.
Right, but was he getting paid for it? I don't ever remember paying for this mowing.
We never paid John, he just did it.
Right, and so that's where I'm just kind of, I'm wondering if just in Mark's defense, it was assumed that that was like a county responsibility, and just John doing it, so. I would suggest probably tabling it till we find a little more information or something, if somebody requested that he does it, I'd like to be curious who. And like you said, even if the county was gonna mow, we would have wrote or mowed it in like September, October, or this amount of the hit, so.
City ordinance is says to be kept mowed.
So if the city ordinance, they should, Braddock should be paying for it.
Well, I guess I'm curious why, why the county be responsible for the city ordinance to be, that's still the property owner's responsibility, and we don't own the property, we own the property behind it, between that and the road, so, so I'm not sure.
Where's our property line?
Right where that, so Josh's cursor needs to go to the left a little bit, that white building is the county shop, right there. That's Emmons County's lot there.
That's our lot.
Do we own the parcel outside of that lot, though, right there? Okay, so we own that squared-out parcel, and then that belongs to DMW, according to Josh.
Yep. It's turned out into the river again.
So, yeah, I guess I'm not quite sure why that bill's on our desk. I'd say to be respectful of Mark, we should just table it now, and I don't know, we can maybe talk to the city of Braddock, or somebody's gotta have a reasoning for it, I guess, but.
Be discreet.
If it's a legitimate reason, it's different, but just plopping a bill up here, I don't, it doesn't look like this is our responsibility unless I'm really missing something, so it's.
If it's a federal aid, we'll, we put the shores and follow here.
Why don't we just push that under Old and Unfinished Business for next month, and let's try and get some more information on it, but everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. All right, next item will be a building permit for Northern Plains Ag Incorporated of Linton for a one hundred by eighty coal storage business, lot one, southwest quarter, less the railroad, section twenty, township one thirty-two, range seventy-six.
Yeah, that's the shop they already put up, I think Chris, Christina, our new tax director, went out there and informed them, I believe, to do a building permit for the building that was already put up, so. I mean setbacks and roads are.
That's what I thought.
They kind of did it on their own, but everything looks good to me, it appears that should be off, right off the railroad property. But that's hard to determine, because their legal descriptions are based on the center line of the old gravel tracks, which they're not there, so. I mean, that's on them, the landowner has to know that it was put on their land, you know, but.
So the building, is the building encroaching on another parcel in the name, or?
Maybe. I don't think so.
Okay.
Maybe they bought the railroad property.
No, they haven't, people aren't buying them now.
But you can buy the railroad.
Yeah, but you have to get surveyed, you have to pay for a survey, they're, because they don't know exactly where it's at, so the railroad's making people pay for a survey, and then they'll do a D.
So, yeah, so I, I guess I was confused by this, because it says Northern Plains Ag, I was, but that, that's Maverick.
It's Maverick, yeah, that's why I was confused.
Maybe they changed the name.
I think it's just changed.
Is it applied for as Northern Plains Ag, it is?
No.
Yeah. Applied for as Northern Plains Ag?
They changed it in there, they changed the name because they have a sign Maverick.
Must have, okay. So you're okay with approving it, Josh?
Yeah.
You think it meets the setbacks and stuff, okay.
Yep.
Well, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve table or deny. Commissioner Holm makes a motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second by Commissioner Everly, any more discussion? Just a long pause for the second? Pause is kind of loud, because I'm like, well, there should be some discussion if nobody wanted a second.
Oh, it's just too bad that they did it after the fact.
Well, I, I'll say one thing, in defense of the ag community, there's an assumption that you don't need a building permit, and the true assumption is, is you don't have to pay a fee, but you still need to apply for the permit to make sure the setbacks and the other ordinances are followed, there's no fee, right, Josh?
There is a fee for this.
This one would be considered commercial.
Okay, okay, this one's different, but then, again.
If they pay taxes on the.
That's another ag commercial blend, where like, oh, it's egg building, well, it's an egg business.
So what's the fee on that?
If we go off the commercial, it's gonna be three hundred dollars. And they just emailed me this, oh, I think on election day, so it's been crazy, so I haven't talked to them yet, but.
But, I mean, there's, because even when people call me, and then they're like, do I need a building permit for a grain bin, I'm like, absolutely, you don't have to pay, but you still need the permit, so we can make sure we're just properly vetting that stuff, so that's, this must have been, this was probably one of them deals, where like, well, we don't need a permit, well, yeah, you do, you just.
They don't need a setback from the railroad property.
If we count it as agriculture, they don't, if we count it as commercial, it'd be similar to the, like, all the houses at Beaver Bay, that'd be at least fifteen feet back from the side of the lot, but that's hard to determine that exact line without someone paying for that survey.
Are they setback from the north?
It appears it is, yes.
Well, and the other, the other thing, too, is this a commercial business on an ag-zoned property?
Yeah, it is zone agriculture, but they're taxed as commercial.
Right, and that's where even some of that, so like, even with the zoning stuff, it's a commercial business, but the zoning is ag, so then the setback would be zero, right?
They would really apply, as long as it's on their property.
So it's, again, one of them blurred lines of like, commercial agriculture, and so, anyway. Okay. So we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion on the approval? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, permit approved. Next item is a commissioner to serve on canvas board, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I don't think I'd put it on the elected, right?
Usually be a pretty major conflict of interest, I would say no, you probably aren't eligible, and my dad's on the ballot, so that eliminates me.
I might be gone, so that eliminates.
Might be gone, I don't know if that eliminates you, I think you'd have to be gone, actually.
Well, I am gonna be gone, then.
No, you won't.
I'm going to.
Not November eighteenth.
I'm going to Bismarck. I know I'm going there.
Doesn't take that long, but I might be going, I don't know. Eighteenth of November?
Well, if nobody can do it, please appoint somebody.
Joshua.
I could probably do it, I don't think I'll be going.
Commissioner Everly will be on the canvassing board for the, as a representation for the county commission, thank you, Commissioner Everly. Second.
It's November eighteen.
Yeah, November eighteenth, ten a.m.
I'll call you to remind you.
Sheriff Sanders has no issues with Art Place By The Bay's annual liquor license, so entertain a motion to approve table or deny the liquor license for Art Place By The Bay. Commissioner, Commissioner Everly motions to approve, seconded by Commissioner Materi, is there any more discussion on the liquor license for Art Place By The Bay? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Opposed.
Is that that?
Liquor license approved. Next is a plat for property lying within the southeast quarter, southwest quarter, section twenty, township one twenty-nine, range seven-four.
Definitely brought that down.
She just added this one? I looked at it a while back, so. Yeah, that one was all good, they're just plating out the yard, the road going into the yard, and then the houses planted.
Kilber? Kilber? Joyce Kilber?
Yeah.
That's south of Hagan?
Yeah.
Where's she plating up?
Just the road going into the yard and the house, taking it separate from, from everything else. Don't know their plans, but. It's all good.
It's all good.
Yeah.
We got something like a motion to approve, then. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the plat. Stated, seconded by Commissioner Materi, is there any more discussion on the plat submitted by Mrs. Kilber? Any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, plat approved. With that, that is the end of the agenda items. Oh, I just, the permit was applied as Northern Plains Ag, so.
That would be on the sign, these views that you approved, you're right.
Yep.
Did it go smoothly in there for you tomorrow, some of the lectures?
Yes, everything was really good.
The machines are sealed and activated with the keys.
Everything was really good, but I would say, you know, when I go through my electoral training, I talk to them about this situation, that situation, this person comes in with this and that, well, that never happens, everything happens, everything. I mean, we had different, like, we had rivals, we had a couple emergency hospitalization battles, and things that you go through your training with, it's not that never happens, it didn't get. I mean, it was, it was a good election, though, a lot of people came on to vote, it was good. It's been real.
So did you have a better turnout than usual?
Oh, yes. But there was a lot on the ballot. There was a lot.
A lot of the people didn't understand, that measure four was tough for a lot of people, a lot. And I think they should lay that out more and define it.
The way they word half the stuff in there, it's hard to understand, it's like, what do you, what do you, yeah, you don't even know what you're voting for half the time.
It was a bad deal to get Casper Jacobs to vote.
What was it, there?
Casper Jacobs dead.
Oh, yeah.
The way they found the poor man.
Yeah, he was just down, not the one, the one that told him to die, he comes down all the time, come down and bring stuff down, or keep making big stuff, brings that down, and.
I'll tell you what's different, like today, now seeing him coming in, I'll see him just come in, he'd stop in and say hi, and visit him for a while, and he's like.
Just a while? Just Jasper life, dog.
Yeah, he'd be there all day.
Oh, yeah, that was Jasper, all good.
It's too bad.
Too bad, that's life. We'll all get our turn. Those projects must be coming along, they'll get up by wool bomb, and on that cowl, she was done with them.
Was the wool bomb coming?
I don't know, according to Ron Wagner, he sent me some folders, they had like ten sections set, or another twenty of them to set. But he said it's coming along, they've got the gravel out, they just said last night, the gravel is filled, but he said there's like, is it ten feet of fill above these culverts?
Oh, bet it is, that's something there.
Is it that steep?
Yeah.
But he said, yeah, but the material, most of it's close by, right on site.
Pretty much a mile away.
Yeah.
How many trees that, what's the number down?
It's stated on there, isn't it, do you have a copy of the bill?
The original one wasn't there.
I don't know, there's, he's got them all marked, how many inches?
What we know, fifty, okay.
We ain't tried on the mirrors.
Doesn't look like a lot, too, you start to.
When you start talking. The Easter must have the fuel, and the propane, they rotate it.
Pardon?
They rotate it.
Yes, they do, yes.
And you'd have a buck still comes in?
I think she had a jury trial, Kathleen's first trial.
Much more, she talked in there, okay.
Where do we get water from during the distributing?
Must be this bottle of water, it's in.
Yes, those big tanks of water.
We only get water from this central water, or not?
Yeah, we can't have central water, we still buy the water, drink your water, so.
I can't drink the water from there.
Went to the bathroom and run the sink once.
I used it in the courthouse.
There's times, it's yellow on time, yeah, it's a little brown when you go to the sink.
You gotta watch where you're gonna shoot.
What?
I don't drink, I'm a troll.
I don't either. It might be okay, but.
It's okay, but. They've got a water bottle, but maybe if you had it, it's not water with chlorine.
How come you keep, keep Karen and Anita so much, I mean, what?
Well, they had a jury trial, and I think Anita came in to help with that.
Well, that other lady.
And I, I don't know, you'll have to ask Kathleen, I don't know.
The other lady quit?
Jordan had quit.
She quit, so she didn't have this whole sugar problem to prove. So we're moving for assistance.
Is it the furnace running or the air?
They're running the air?
Air, because you have the heat on in here, and the towels would stick, and you'd get seventy-seven, seventy-eight, if you turn the heat off, you'd be like.
I figured it was the air running.
Is that what happened the first time Materi had a meeting in here, and he was dying? That time, I thought you were gonna die, I was like. I just remember thinking, I just remember thinking, he's gonna be that red at every meeting, he's gonna be along for you.
I remember you walking up and stuff, stuff right there, I won't repeat what he said.
Well, because I have a heat switch, he's going to pass it.
I'll tell you one thing, this time of year is like that, you know, where you get them warm days, and your house will heat up to like seventy-four, and you don't want to turn the air on? You don't want to turn the heat on either, then, then you wake up at four, five, six in the morning, it's sixty-two degrees in your house, and you're like, that's why I was sleeping so good, though, you know, like.
That's why you slept so good.
Right, then when you get up, you're like, jeez, that's cold, there you go, sixty-two, it's a little chilly.
You just open the window, that's why you do it, you don't put air on.
What's going in that building here next to the butcher shop, guys?
Oh, the old family dollar?
Yeah.
No idea.
Somebody said a little mini Walmart, is this true? Huh? I can't imagine.
I've heard only rumor, so.
What'd you hear?
Rumors.
Rumors, that's what they are, this was a rumor, too, rumor.
None of them seem that interesting, so I'm not gonna spread it.
N D S U Extension Service, eleven thousand.
We have to reimburse N D S U for half the salaries.
Oh, okay.
Dennis put some timing, didn't he? Dennis Gloss. Dennis Gloss put some timing, yeah.
So this is a special meeting, you're still on the board until December first, is it December first?
First Monday, the new commissioner takes over the first Monday in December, so you're on for that Sunday again.
So special meeting on Sunday, or?
She'll end this coming.
December, December first, or we got a special meeting? Can't just let you guys off the hook then.
Takes off, takes over January first.
January first, why is that different with Commissioner Hill?
It's weird, the commissioner's the first Monday in December, the sheriff, the state's attorney, court, the court is January first, the auditor's April first, the treasurer's May first.
Why, the commissioner's the first of the month, the year, I don't get that, why, that doesn't make sense.
How can they take over if they're not sworn in yet?
Pardon me? I didn't get you, I'm sorry.
How can they take over on the first if they're not sworn in yet?
Who, the commissioners?
They'll get sworn in.
They get sworn in, they'll get sworn in on, on that Tuesday.
Well, then they really couldn't be a commissioner yet till they're sworn in, right?
That's a legislative thing.
Well, leave it to them.
So, chairman gets to seize power for one day, unopposed. I got ideas.
Well, it was nice serving on the board with all you guys.
Well, yeah.
Is there, is there something they got assigned, is there a bill from you, you'd put it on there for this?
Probably, yeah, there should be one in there, I'm not.
I didn't know it was disagreeing, but.
Part of it.
Yeah. Also, congratulations to Commissioner Miller for getting, for getting elected, I guess, because you were on the appointment, so congratulations. Also, congratulations to Commissioner Miller for getting, for getting reelected, I guess, cause you were only one, so congratulations, great.
I don't know if it's congratulations, but good luck to you.
Yeah, what was that?
Yeah, you too.
How's that seat feel, you, you next chairman, or?
No.
Yeah. You're just seeing how it felt right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
I don't know, we disagree, but sometimes that's better, I mean.
Well, board that agrees all the time is useless, so.
But I hope there's no hard feelings or anything, I.
I'll still stop by your place every once in a while and say, hey.
You will?
Yeah.
Very seldom, but once in a while.
When I'm down, I face lake fishing, I'm fishing on your land. Well, if there's, uh, no more, no more bills, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Commissioner Everly, last motion, seconding, meeting adjourned.